Good evening. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Fulcher.
Present.
Councilmember Dabala.
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
Yo, yo.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Just going to run through really quickly. The council met at 6:30 today in a city council administrative function regarding the city attorney's contract and legislative advocate's contract. And just as a note, administrative function sessions are closed to the public. And so this evening, we will be covering a few things. The first is a vote on a single reading ordinance approving the FY25 community grant awards. And then the second are two work sessions. The first is FY25 budget amendment number one. And the second is the FY25 budget policy working session finding discussion, findings discussions. In terms of upcoming agendas, on Wednesday, the 24th, we will have an administrative function starting at 6:30 regarding the city manager's evaluation. On Wednesday, July the 24th, the city council will also meet at 7:30, our regularly scheduled time. We will have a voting session. The voting session will consist of three items. First, reading ordinance approving the FY25 budget amendment number one. First reading ordinance approving the, first reading ordinance regarding the 2024 city election. Single reading ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension with Rumel, Popper, and Call LLC for civil and site engineering services. We will also have three work sessions that evening. The first is options for addressing restricted covenants on Tacoma Park deeds. The second is an overview of code enforcement. And last is a housing policy discussion, number two. Just as a reminder for folks, we had a separate housing discussion a couple of weeks ago. And this work session will be a continuation of that discussion. On Wednesday, July the 23rd, the council will meet at 7:30. We will have a voting session back from the brink resolution. Resolution regarding recommendations of the Sustainable Maryland Committee. Tentatively, a FY26 budget policy resolution. Single reading ordinance approving a contract with the city attorney. Single reading ordinance approving a contract with legislative advocate. Single reading ordinance approving the, I'm sorry, second reading ordinance approving the FY25 budget amendment number one. Second reading ordinance regarding the 2024 city election. And the resolution setting forth dates for the city council's summer recess. And the council will be on recess from that point until Wednesday, September the 4th. All right. So this evening, I have the pleasure of doing a couple of things that I enjoy doing. The first, we have a new member of the Ethics Commission that needs to be sworn in. Adrian Freeman. So if you wouldn't mind coming on up. And we are going to swear you in today. Excellent. All right. So I'm just going to ask you to hold up your right hand and just repeat after me. I, Adrian Freeman.
I, Adrian Freeman.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
Be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Ethics Commissioner.
Execute the office of Ethics Commissioner.
For the city of Tacoma Park.
For the city of Tacoma Park.
In the state of Maryland.
In the state of Maryland.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And code.
And code.
Of the city of Tacoma Park.
Of the city of Tacoma Park.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. So now we're going to get you to sign a couple of things. Just going to make sure I have two copies. Excellent. Thank you so much. And again, thank you so much for your service. I also have the pleasure this evening to acknowledge a group of students that are participating in the RISE program that are supporting some of our council members during this RISE season. So I do just want to, do you all want to say a few words? Or should I? Okay, go ahead.
It's been a real pleasure to have the four of you with us. You all ask really interesting questions, and I'm really interested to see where you go in the future and how you build upon this experience. Today, they came with me to COG to watch a transportation board meeting. And a lot of people that were attending that meeting said, oh, like, I never considered bringing any of my student, any students with me to these kinds of things. And I said, yeah, you should do that, and you should give 16-year-olds the right to vote while you're at it.
I just want to thank all four of you for being willing to come to the city of Tacoma Park.
Yes, I cannot stress enough the fact that you have been so helpful. Fourth of July parade in that heat, some of you all were there. Helping out in the various meetings and participating and listening in, you all have been there. And we're very grateful that you've chosen to come to the city of Tacoma Park to do your internship. So now I have the pleasure of calling each of your names, and we're going to recognize you with a certificate. And don't look so scared. It's okay.
And then we're going to do a group picture.
And then we're going to do a group photo in honor of your service. So first, we have Mahar Singh. Tacoma Park City Council recognizes and thanks Mahar for participating in the Montgomery County Public Schools Summer RISE Program with Councilmember Shayna Fulcher. Next, we have Rasni Katkey. Yes. The city of Tacoma Park recognizes and thanks Rasni for participating in the Montgomery County Public Schools Summer RISE Program with Councilmember Shayna Fulcher. I know. It just seems more official up here, and people can actually see. Next, we have Juliet Craig. This Tacoma Park City Council recognizes and thanks Juliet Craig for participating in the Montgomery County Public Schools Summer RISE Program with Councilmember Cindy Dabala. And come on down. And then I'm going to, to save myself a little bit of walking, I'm also going to ask for Obasa Ahmed to come down. The city of Tacoma Park City Council recognizes and thanks Obasa Ahmed for participating in the Montgomery County Public Schools Summer RISE Program with Councilmember Shayna Fulcher.
And a point of order, Mayor Circe, too, I want to acknowledge the mother of one of our RISE students who is now on the Ethics Committee. Ms. Adrian Freeman, last year, your daughter was one of our RISE students. And you should be so proud, and we're so delighted to have you now on the Ethics Committee.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. You are the amazing guy.
And again, congratulations to all of our RISE students. Okay, so next, we're going to move to public comments on voting items. Just as a reminder for folks, tonight, we have one voting item. It's a single reading ordinance approving the FY25 community grants awards. Do we have any public comments on voting items? Do we have any virtual comments on voting items? Okay, perfect. All right. And so we're going to move to any general public comments. Do we have any general public comments this evening?
Part two. I'm asking one question here. What are you going to do to help my son? What are you going to do? I started parents especially in 2015. I begged and begged to turn my, one of the few small houses in Tacoma Park into a home for people like my son. There are people wandering, I see them wandering on my street, lost people, wandering down the street like the man who killed Trump. I hope they don't have guns, but I see them wandering on the street. What are you going to do to help him? Can my son and people like him live in your damn new library? With the fancy lights and the fancy this and the fancy that? Could he live there and his friends? You all live in a different world. I'm sorry. You all live in a different world, and I wish you'd try to understand this. I don't know what I'll have to do. What do I have to do to get help? What do I have to do? Beg, go on my knees? What do I have to do? I don't know what to do.
Thank you, Mr. Machuie. Do we have any other general public comments this evening?
I'm here on Zoom. Is it appropriate to start?
We're taking the people in the room first, but Mr. Marks, I will let you know when you're free to speak.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Arthur David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue. I've heard odd ideas about budget policy in the past few months. I've heard that having a commercial property tax rate that's higher than the residential rate is a bad idea because property owners will pass the taxes on to struggling businesses as rent increases. That analysis is incomplete, though. The business owners will in turn raise their prices, and those prices will be paid by their customers, many if not most of whom live outside the city. So increasing commercial property taxes is a way to get non-residents to help pay for city services. To me, as a resident, that's a good idea. I've heard that having a vacant property tax rate might help reduce vacancy, but isn't a good source of revenue. That seems to ignore properties such as the vacant 6530 New Hampshire Avenue, the mostly vacant Washington McLaughlin site, and the site of the abandoned hospital. A doubled vacant property tax rate would produce about $80,000 of revenue from just the hospital site, given its $15 million assessed value. And vacant property taxes on some such sites would be paid by companies headquartered outside the city. To me, as a resident, that's a good idea. And I've heard that the city's railroad and utilities tax rate is comparable to other rates in Montgomery County. Since city residents pay the highest rate in the county, comparability would mean that railroads and utilities pay the highest rate in the county. Kensington now has a $5 rate. Tacoma Park had best have a rate of at least $5.01. The higher taxes would mean slightly higher utility fees for folks throughout the region, most of whom live outside the city. So this is another way to get non-residents to help the city meet its expenses. To me, as a resident, that's a good idea. I hope the council will adopt a policy that does not simply consider tax sources other than residential property taxes, but prioritizes use of other property, other tax sources over residential property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we're going to move to our virtual commenters. Randall Marks, you're free to speak.
Thanks. I'm Randy Marks. I've owned a house on Allegheny Avenue since 1987. I think it's my second time addressing council, and obviously, the first time on Zoom since I don't know the procedure. I'm here to talk about the Budget Policy Working Group findings discussion. On June 2nd, I sent all of you an email suggesting an amendment to the budget resolution you were considering later today, which I viewed as unbalanced because it didn't look at the expenditure side. I thought that was a mistake because of the many of my neighbors have concerns about our tax rate and that it's an impact on making Tacoma Park unaffordable for many of our longtime residents who live in expensive homes, leading to higher property taxes. None of you responded, and the impact is that you're going to lose up to three minutes of your lives by having to listen to me. I'm not going to read the proposed amendment because I'm hoping my council member will offer it, and you will second discuss and pass it. In summary, it would involve reviewing the expense side of the budget, including our management structure, the possibility of turning services back to the county, possible efficiencies, and whether some services are non-essential. And it would set up a task force of citizens and residents to assist you in this effort. This amendment would bring us two benefits. First, it would ensure that our budget process examines everything. And second, it would enhance transparency. The first is obvious, so I want to talk about transparency. I think past budget processes have been hobbled by residents lacking some essential information in a usable format. We get a lot of information, but sometimes it's not presented in a way that facilitates our feedback. For example, I'd like to know the feasibility and budget implications of the county assuming particular city services. And I would like to know what are the key decisions that would have a significant impact on the tax rate? Years ago, I helped Casey Kostiak design a simple survey to capture feedback in Ward Three on items on the reconciliation list. Having city staff create a list of key decisions early in the budget process would facilitate, with their impact on the tax rate, would facilitate council and staff receiving useful feedback. In conclusion, please have compassion for us taxpayers. And you can have the other three seconds back.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other virtual public comments? Okay, thank you all very much. All right. So with that, we're going to move on to council comments. Councilmember Gibson.
Yes, thank you. And I've asked the mayor for a few more minutes to discuss this. First of all, just a reminder, the Stormwater Resilience Zoom meeting tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock, I believe. So that's something of interest to a lot of folks, including those in Ward Three. But I wanted to take a few moments to talk about our fiscal stuff. I think it's a good time for us to reflect on our fiscal situation and trends. We've just begun a new fiscal year. I and others have received, recently received property taxes. And tonight, we're going to review the City Council of Budget Finance Working Groups FY25 recommendations and consider policy objectives for FY26. I want to offer some context by way of a few data points and notes. In terms of the city's tax rate from '20 to '23, it was steady at $0.53.97 per hundred. In FY24, it was increased to $0.55.22 per hundred, and it remains at that rate now. In tax trends, if we compare cost of living versus property taxes, that we see that with between the years 2016 and 22, the federal COLA averaged an increase of 1.4% per year, whereas our property tax receipts were up an average of 3.4% per year. Staffing trends versus population, from FY15 to FY24, the population in the city increased 3.5%. Our staffing increased 11.7%. On a positive side, however, it has remained basically flat since then. Some major events and decisions impacted our budgets, specifically the COVID pandemic recession, the infusion of 17 million ARPA funds, and the library project. We, as the city managers had pointed out during our budget process, we are in a current structural deficit in that FY25 general fund expenditures are budgeted to exceed revenues by 1.6 million. In the long term, the city must balance revenue and spending. The housing cost burden referenced in part by my resident constituent in Ward Three, based on analysis by staff, approximately 20%, of Tacoma Park homeowners may be considered cost burdened. In February this year, I did a budget survey in response to what the working group had researched. I piloted a Ward Three budget survey and got 300 respondents. A few results included to the question, "To increase fiscal sustainability and balance the upcoming fiscal year budget, the city may have to consider various options for reducing expenditures or increasing revenues. If this were the case, please select which options you would prefer to see implemented." The top four selections were, "Transfer selected programs and services back to Montgomery County", "Freeze new hiring of staff", "Reduce or eliminate programs", and four, "Allocate additional ARPA funds to capital projects." Another question, "Do you have a project or idea that would help the city live within its means?" Two themes emerged. One theme was the desire for increased fiscal accountability and a halt to ever-rising taxes and tax rates, and the potential transfer of some services. A second theme was an emphasis on increased housing and economic development to increase our tax base. Third question, "How do you, current property taxes impact your own ability or desire to remain in Tacoma Park?" The highest response was a moderate negative impact, followed by no significant impact, and 20% said a significant negative impact. In this context, I note, one, the Budget Finance Working Group made progress on the budget calendar, including resident engagement, and provided modest revenue recommendations. Two, for fiscal year '26, there's a need for more balanced fiscal approach with a robust strategies to address both revenue and expenditures. I hope the council will recommend both. And lastly, I am glad, and it's helpful to note, that future budget decisions, in making future budget decisions, funding for a consultant to assist and develop and implement a performance measurement system program was included and passed in the budget. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I am, I'm going to talk about the construction of constructive dissent. Because everyone's ward is not the same, and the main concerns or requirements associated with those wards change. Supply and demand dictate some things about economics around here. It doesn't make us any different than anywhere else. And the irony about some of these conversations to me is that we continue to have this conversation about taxes and services and things like that, when, in Ward Six, we are pretty happy with the level of services that we are receiving, in particular, on a couple of issues which we'd like to get to. I talk a lot about crime issues, and that is because we have a large economic development arm in Ward Six. We have the largest personal property engine in this town. And some of the things that Arthur was talking about, about raising personal property taxes to gain revenue for the city, in large part, that's the way the city has been funding itself for any number of years. So if we were to do that, it wouldn't be abnormal. But it would be, to be clear, those dollars went over there. And so when we talk about these issues, we are not in a situation where we didn't have, for example, someone come in and say that all funding and spending should be stopped unless it's in Wards Four, Five, and Six, because there's an equity play there. And invariably, whenever there's an equity play, or there's a fairness thing, or something like that comes up around here, we start talking about how we really need to worry about the property taxes. I find that to be tedious, and really not a substantive, real deep dive into what we are doing here with our finances. I'm a professional at this, and I think that that is fatuous. One of the things about that is that I'd like to continue to move forward with the positive energy that we have, in particularly with the police department, because if you look at our ward reports, we aren't getting a lot of extra things that aren't the Walgreens anymore. And that's because I'm working with our police department and our public works department to express concerns about the overall working, living, lifestyle issues in Ward Six. We were affirmed by good policy being delivered by our city staff. Invariably, every time we start talking about that, somebody starts talking about how we need to get rid of something, or we needed to cut something, or whatever else. And I get that it's fun to live in a place where you feel like you're politically connected. But I don't think it's fair for anyone to assume that they have any more right to not gentrify out of a place than any of the other people that you gentrified out of here. So when I'm talking about constructive dissent, I like to think about all of the efforts that I put forth on University Boulevard and how it's safe to walk over there now. I like to think about all the efforts that we put forth on New Hampshire Avenue to make sure we got those lights, and how proud I am of the staff of getting that final light. And how none of those things are going to happen if we don't have a city government that pays attention to those kinds of things. And so you can be as cozy as you want in the first three wards, and I really didn't want to have to do this today. But as we're sitting here looking in and thinking about how all these other things are so depressing about national politics, you want to get rid of the taxes so that you could live well, and that's absurd. And so when I talk about... And so when I talk about constructive dissent, some of it is about, you know, making people think about the things that they're saying and the consequences of those actions. And so to conclude, I will go back to what I began this whole process with, before we end up trying to run for things, and if I don't end up back here, with some poetry. This is, again, Claude McKay, and this is called "America." Although she feeds me the bread of bitterness and sinks into my throat her tiger's tooth, stealing my breath of life, I will confess I love this cultured hell that tests my youth. Her vigor flows like tides into my blood, giving me strength erect against her hate. Her bigness sweeps my being like a flood, yet as a rebel fronts a king in state, I stand within her walls with not a shred of terror or malice, not a word of jeer. Darkly, I gaze into the days ahead and see her might and granite wonders there, beneath the touch of times unerring hand, like priceless treasures sinking in the sand. So I am going to continue to attempt to deliver on the promise of the marketing concepts that are this town, and they're going to be equally distributed to all of the wards, until I don't have any say in it anymore.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember Fulter.
Thank you. I want to take a second to thank staff for all of the special attention that you've given to the RISE students. I feel like they've gotten a really great introduction, and even more than an intro, to how our city runs, so thank you all for doing that. There's a lot of people on this dais right now that have done work helping with the RISE students. I want to mention that I am collecting art to display around the library fence. I'm looking for outdoor weatherproof art that's been created by youth in Tacoma Park, so please, if you know anybody, get the word out. And then I will also be on that LIDC meeting tomorrow night, and then, before doing that, I will be attending the ribbon cuttings that are along Carroll Avenue, so looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulter. Councilmember Dibala.
Thank you. I will save my budget comments for when we get to the topic, but I would appreciate if I could get a copy of Councilmember Gibson's remarks, because I think I heard you say that that was a Ward Three survey?
Yes.
Okay, not a city survey?
Absolutely.
Just, okay. And the other thing to point out, that if you go a little bit further back in the tax rate, you find that it is actually, it was actually quite a bit higher by several cents than it is now. But we will talk about all of that later. I did have a couple of announcements. Thank you for taking on the library art project, which I had talked about some time ago and couldn't figure out how to do. So thanks.
Don't thank me until we get some submissions.
Till we get some art, yeah. Okay. And I also will be at the ribbon cutting and on this Stormwater Zoom. There have been a number of people who have approached the city management and myself about a sidewalk in Longridge Sligo neighborhood. You'll be getting a response from the city, but I also would like to point out that there is a new process, and this will be probably one of the first sidewalk project proposals to be, requests, excuse me, to be reviewed in the new system. The same for traffic calming on Lower Flower, which is also in the same neighborhood. And last but not least, I went to the Chesapeake Bay planning meeting for local government officials to look at what will be in the future when the current set of goals expires in 2025, and there'll be a recap of that at the COG Chesapeake Bay meeting on Friday, which I will be doing. And I think I have forgotten to send it to the Public Works Director. She's looking right at me. I shared it with council, and I will double back and get the draft report to you and to any resident who wants to comment, because we are now in, the Bay Program, not me, is in the comment period for what the future for the Chesapeake Bay Interstate Program should look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Hanzak.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay? I just wanted, I just had three quick little announcements. One is, I want to say thank you to those who came out Tacoma Coffee last weekend to discuss priorities moving forward for the next three months, for my final three months on council for now. And in particular, I wanted to say thank you to the Essex House residents who came out to one of these Flower Avenue meetings for the first time, and we were able to build bridges with the Sligo Park Hills Community Association President, so that was a pretty neat bridge to be able to build. We had a really nice, long conversation, so that was terrific. And then on July 26, I want to let everybody know that there'll be a picture show in Pupusa's from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Flower Avenue Urban Park on the north end of the city. They're showing Jurassic Park from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. And then on August 1, also at Flower Avenue Park, there will be free live music as part of the Park Summer Concert Series. The 19th Street Band is playing from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. So I will talk about aspects of the budget when we get to it in the agenda. I want to thank all of the folks who provided comments tonight. It is always really helpful to hear that feedback as we are working through what is, you know, complex and multifaceted, which is, you know, not only just how to balance our budget, but how to think creatively and innovatively to generate additional revenues and how, and cost-saving measures in terms of how we do business. And it's not one meeting that's going to be able to address those challenges. It's going to take many, but I appreciate residents that have come out and provided feedback. Just want to, again, highlight that I will be attending the ribbon cutting that will be happening next, well, tomorrow, actually, for the new businesses on Carroll Avenue, and I'm super excited about going to the ribbon cutting. I want to thank our Board of Elections and our Ethics Commission staff, residents who participated in the webinar last night about the city election process and how to run, and the things that candidates need to know. So I definitely want to thank our city clerk for all of the work that she put in, along with, yes, because it was a great, I listened in. I wasn't able to figure out how to show my face, but I did listen in. But it was really a great wealth of information, and it was something that this council explicitly asked for, to ensure that people who are running for office in the city have information about how to do so, and what the rules are, and that we're providing information about being elected officials in an early, in an earlier timeframe than in the past, because we want to make sure that folks are equipped to be able to run. Next thing, I will be attending the COG Leadership Retreat on Friday and Saturday. So just so that folks know, I am on the COG Executive Board, so it is usually a great opportunity to have a chance to talk to other leaders about region-wide issues. With that, I'm going to turn things over to our city manager, Mr. Dispirito.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, and guests. From the, I'd like to report from the Housing and Community Development Department. We have a new staff member on the Housing and Community Development Team. Jessica Troop has joined us as the Housing Program Specialist. She will be working on creating, monitoring, and implementing the city's resident and building programming, such as emergency rental assistance, multi-family building improvement grants, and more. Please join us in welcoming Jessica to the team. From the Police Department, we welcome our new Emergency Preparedness Manager, Mark McInerney. He will work with residents, city, county, and state departments, and the private sector to ensure Tacoma Park has the plans, resources, and procedures to prepare for and recover from disasters and emergencies. Mr. McInerney was the Program Manager for the DC Health Contact Trace Force during the COVID-19 pandemic, where he led operations for over 300 investigation staff, developed performance metrics, and wrote operating protocols, outreach scripts, and vaccine enrollment policies. As a DHS contractor, Mr. McInerney provided onsite support to FEMA's National Preparedness Directorate, where he analyzed DHS training and exercised policies and criteria, I'm sorry, curricula, and produced federal and state preparedness reports for FEMA and congressional leadership. Mr. McInerney has held several roles in correctional and pretrial case management, community organizing, and justice-focused consulting and client services. He holds a Bachelor of Arts in Criminology from Marquette University and a Master of Science in Criminal Justice from Michigan State University. From the Public Works Department, as referenced a bit earlier, the Low Impact Development Center, known as LIDC, has completed their Stormwater Resiliency Study Evaluation and Recommendations. The report is posted on the city's website on the Stormwater Resiliency webpage. LIDC will present an overview of their report and recommendations on a Zoom meeting scheduled for July 18 at 7:00 p.m. The Zoom registration link can be accessed on the Stormwater Resiliency page. Full information about the LIDC report, including recordings of previous meetings, copies of report findings, and the rain-planned stormwater runoff calculator, all can be found on the Stormwater Resiliency webpage. Also from Public Works, the city will be hosting the fourth and final community meeting for the Stormwater Resiliency Study on Thursday, July 18 at 7:00 p.m. The final report is posted on the city's Stormwater Resiliency Study webpage. Folks interested, residents, can register for the meeting, which will be held remotely on the webpage. And from the city manager's office, I'd just like to do a shout-out. I'd like to give a special shout-out to the city's Human Resources Department, particularly our two newest staff members, Monique Miller and Tyra Womack, who are providing extremely welcome support during the department's busiest season. In the transition into the new fiscal year, they are tireless in their work to provide up-to-date information and resources, and to update the benefits information for staff via our open enrollment period, as well as updating payroll information for all staff as a result of the new budget and the city's collective bargaining agreements. Please join me in thanking the entire Human Resources team for all their hard work these past weeks in providing this critical function in support of the city's staff. And that concludes my report this evening. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, so we're going to move straight into our voting session this evening. The first item is a single reading ordinance approving the FY-2025 community grant awards. Would someone like to move the single reading ordinance? Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I think.
Go for it.
All right. Councilmember Gibson, I think I heard your second first. Are there any points of discussion for this item? Okay. And given that this is a single reading ordinance, do we need to call the roll?
We should.
Thank you very much. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fulter.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanzak.
Yes.
Councilmember Small.
Aye.
Mayor Cersei.
Aye. Okay. So we have gone through our voting item for this evening. The next item is a work session on Budget Amendment Number One. Just want to forewarn my colleagues, we've allocated a 10-minute presentation for the Budget Amendment Number One, and then 15-minute Q and A.
Excellent. Let's stick to it.
All right. So with that, I would like to turn things over to our Director Chung, who will walk us through the Budget Amendment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I am going to give an overview of our first Budget Amendment of fiscal year 25. On May 15/24, the City Council adopted the fiscal year 25 budget. Due to delay in certain expenditures initially planned for fiscal year 24, a modification to 25 budget is necessary to reappropriate funds for those purposes. This Budget Amendment includes four different funds. The first one is General Fund Adjustment. Second one is the Special Revenue Fund. Third one is the Stormwater Fund Adjustment, and then followed by the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Fund Adjustment. In the General Fund Adjustment, reappropriation amount include 648,000 departmental operating budgets and $2.1 million capital improvement project budget. New FY-25 budget expenditure increase is $19,934. That is for the capital improvement cost of the Housing Department, the matching grant fund from the city. The total budget adjustment in the General Fund is $2.77 million. And the most important projects for the reappropriated amount include the implementation of the HRIS system, which is $256,000. The HR contract to provide classification study, that is $105,000. There is $210,000 for the fiscal year 22 police vehicle ordered but not delivered. And also $152,000 police vehicle ordered but not delivered for fiscal year 23. And for fiscal year 24, there is the amount of $249,000, again, for police vehicles. And there is also the trash truck order delay in the amount of $630,000. And the library construction is $775,000. And these are the most important projects in the General Fund. In the Special Revenue Fund, the total reappropriation amount is $259,364. And the most important projects are IT and cable renovation delay in the amount of $125,000. Fiscal year 23 control room delay, construction delay, $122,000. So these are the two most important projects in the Special Revenue Fund. All other special revenue projects are relating to grant, so there is a grant expenditure and is covered by the grant reimbursement. So the net difference is zero if we have expenditure increase and also the revenue increase. So that's why we only have two key projects in the Special Revenue Fund. Stormwater Fund Adjustment is totaling $458,000. In the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Fund Adjustment, the total reappropriation amount is $6 million. The key projects include $1 million for the community center atrium floor infill project, $3.5 million for the library construction, $605,000 for multi-family property rehabilitation. The initial project was done, was presented in 2024, and $333,000 sidewalk traffic calming project delay. And there is also $169,000 rental assistance program delay. And the last project in the ARPA fund is the $160,000 recreation center development project delay. So when we're looking at the last page of the cover memo, the table provides an estimated general fund balance change in the first Budget Amendment. The initial fund balance is 12.64 million. After the Budget Amendment, the projected fund balance is reduced to 12.62 million. The balance- The balance reduction is mainly due to the net expenditure increase of that $19,934. The overall Budget Amendment results in a change in the ratio of our unassigned reserve from 16.94% to 16.88%. So this is our general fund unassigned reserve percentage after the Budget Amendment, first Budget Amendment of fiscal year '25. So that conclude my presentation for the first Budget Amendment, and we can take any questions now.
Thank you so much, Director Chung, Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually don't necessarily have any questions about this amendment as it stands. It seems like most of this is carryovers and things that were in '24 that need to be in '25. And going through the list, it seems like, Daryl, you gotta be pretty irritated with a couple of your contractors. But other than that, like, I don't see how we could continue to do business without turning some of these things over. I did want to say, given the circumstances of this conversation and other ones, that I have been exceedingly impressed with the increasing clarity with which we discuss these things. And the, I am thankful that all of the concerns I had when I got here about language and everything else and the way we were presenting things has been changed. So I don't think anybody could say that we are hiding money, moving money funny, or not explaining things. And particularly if, you know, if you live here for over 25 years, you know, I've been here twice, I don't know whose fault that is. But I just wanted to thank you for your efforts.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember Dabala?
Yes, thank you. I have a few questions, and I had asked them by email earlier and gotten a response from city management, but I think they're worth bringing up in public. So the first question has to do with the, you mentioned the human resources monies, the two projects. And so just to recap, we did approve moving ahead with contracting on the one, on the one project. And on the other, on the other project, I understand there's an RFP out. So while we are reappropriating the money, there is movement on those projects, and I appreciate that. Thank you. So the, the second thing I brought up is the ARPA money. We are coming up on a deadline to obligate all the funds. Obligate is a tricky word. And I want to, to hear what staff has to say about when we will be looking at the ARPA budget as a total and looking at these reappraisings, making sure that those projects are going to be obligated in time, finding, figuring out what's left and what we need to do. I know that's not tonight, but can you comment to that a little bit? Thank you.
Sure, yeah, certainly a deadline we're all thinking about a lot. And I do want to clarify, the projects that were moving money from this year to next year and the proposed Budget Amendment, a number of them are already, would already be considered obligated. For example, the library project, we already have a contract in hand and.
Okay, that's a big number, so I feel.
So that's a, that is a big number. There are other dollars, though, in there. For example, like the atrium project, that is another big ticket, a million dollars. And it's something we, we don't necess, we've requested some earmark monies for those funds. So there may be the possibility that we could reallocate those funds in a different way. We're hoping to have an answer about that in the fall. But overall, your points are very well taken, one, that we should have a general conversation about what we're going to do. The likelihood that we're going to allocate all of those funds for all the projects that we want to do right now is very small. So we're going to have to make some tough decisions on how we want to move funds around in order to get those money, get that, those dollars out the door, as well as to, and creative.
So, thank you. So to, so I guess my, my follow-up question on that is when we, when we might be expecting to do that, would that be in September, October?
So September would be my recommendation.
Okay.
So when we get back from, from the recess.
Okay, great. Thank you. My third question had to do with the different CIP construction-related items. Can we get a, a sense of, are they all obligated? And it's just a question of the timing of the construction. I'm talking about the, the IT renovation, the control room, the, the library. Well, you talked about the atrium. Can we get, can we get a sense of that? So this is not the ARPA dollars, this is the other dollars in the capital fund?
Right, so for the, the, moving the communication room, council did approve a contract to start that process now.
Right.
That's not the full amount, because we're also still waiting for a quote for what the replacement cost will be. They first need to do an inventory, and then there's going to be an actual cost for the, for the full quote. So we're, we're anticipating that sometime in August with us actually doing the work in, in September. So that project is moving forward. The I, the IT renovation, due to some staffing issues in DPW, that project has not advanced at this time. So those are general fund dollars that are not currently obligated in any way. And then the last, the last one is the, the library project, I think you, you mentioned, which, which, just, just to remind folks, you know, the first dollars out the door for the library project are our bond proceeds, and there are a few different reasons why that's the, those are the first dollars we're looking to expend. The second will be the ARPA funds.
But they are already obligated.
Those are already obligated, correct?
Just checking. And then my, my last question is for Public Works Director Braithwaite. Just, I also noticed that there were a number of contractors that you were, had not, had been able, that they had not been able to complete the work that you had planned on, and I wondered if you had any comments on, on the, on the situation in terms of, were we expecting them to do too many things? Were there contract issues? Were there staffing issues?
Yeah, there are two main ones, one of which was the Brasheers Run project, which had the cost overrun, so that's $258,000.
Right, I forgot about that.
That will be allocated very quickly, now that it's, once it's officially moved. The other is some sidewalk repair work. We had intended to do the Tacoma Branch hiker-biker trail repairs that are sorely needed and had thought our contractor was online for June, but was not. We've been applying increasing pressure to get a schedule for him in the late summer and hope to have an update within the next week or so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this looks good. It's a lot of pieces, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dabala. Councilmember Fulter?
I have a question, Director Braithwaite, sorry. I, I thought that we used some CDBG money for the Brasheers Run. Is that wrong? Was it a different project?
Yeah, CDBG, we did the Domer Avenue sidewalk, and the big project is our Houston Avenue Stormwater Project.
I think that's what I was thinking about.
That contract was let in FY '24, but the actual work is going to be taking place likely in October. There's a long lead time for ordering the equipment. But we were able to invoice and get reimbursed from CDBG for the bulk of the funds.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. So I am going to echo what, what others have said in terms of this being very clear now, even though there's a lot going on. And I always say, you know, the first, the first Budget Amendment of the fiscal year is the one, right? It's the one that you need to pay attention to. This one, it's a good thing, and I think it also adds to the complexity in terms of all of the grants and the matching that we have to budget for now. And so I see, like, I'm very happy about this, which is wonderful. But like, for example, HCD has almost two pages of special fund revenue items, which really are around those, those grant fund matching and matching activities. And so one question that I, I do have is, you know, as we are doing more in terms of additional grant funds and having to do matching, does, does our systems allow for us to have easier accounting? Because I know at one point, we were talking about, we have the special revenue fund. Now you have so many line items within that. Does the system that we have in place now enable us to better keep track of all of these different grant funding streams that are coming in and how they're being matched with the expenditures?
Usually the grant fund matching is coming out from the general fund.
Right.
So when the directors are making payments for the grant, mostly the, the matching fund is directly charging on the general fund. And then the, the grant payment itself is coming out from the special revenue fund. So we have a separate line designated to general fund for expenditure, and we have a separate line designated to the grant fund in the special revenue. So our system can keep track of every single dollar that we spend in the general fund and in the special revenue fund.
Great, thank you for that, because I know that at one point, there was some, the more lines that we have, the harder it gets to, to keep track of. And another thing is, you know, this $19,000, it's almost $20,000 budget increase. And I recognize that a lot of what we're seeing here are kind of contracts that are moving forward. We've issued the contracts, but the work isn't completely done yet, so we have to pay them in the next fiscal year, and they're basically carryovers. But one of the things that I do want to just be mindful of is whether or not all of these activities, because it does seem like a lot, to what extent are we realistically going to do a lot of this? I know that was discussed as part of the ARPA, and this isn't a question for you, Director Chung, because you're like, look, I just count, I count the beans. But, but, you know, trying to have a, a bit of a look at all of the things that we have here to say realistically, are we going to be able to accomplish all of these things? And if not, is it necessary that we push them forward? Because it's work that really needs to be done? Or is it something that this was a great idea, we didn't do it? We don't have the capacity to do it now, we don't have the capacity to do it tomorrow. It needs to move to our reserve. So I, I think that that is something that I think we deal with a lot when it comes to this first Budget Amendment of the fiscal year, because the inclination, for some, it makes perfect sense, right? We issued this contract, we budgeted the money in '24. The contract has not been awarded, or it hasn't been completed, for whatever reason. Don't mess with my money, because I have contractors on deck. But there may be other instances where we budgeted for something, we're still hoping to do it, but the capacity that we have as a city may not be there. And so instead of putting it forward as an expenditure for the, for the '25 budget, do we want to have this, this moment, maybe as part of Budget Amendment Number Two, to say, hey, we're, we're really not going to be able to do this work. Let's go ahead and put it back towards the reserve.
Mayor, if I could share just a few comments about that. I think over the last couple of years, we have been very intentional about this first Budget Amendment. One of the things that I would argue is a little bit different from at least some of the past practice that I've seen, is that you'll, you'll notice in the notes that most of these speak specifically to a project. So my understanding and my observation of, in, in, in recent history, there have been transfers of dollars without a specific project attached to it. And we've moved away from that practice intentionally for all of the reasons that you just stated. I think there may be one or two on here that are still dependent upon capacity. Of course, the vehicle purchases are still dependent upon the market. But for the most part, the, the dollars that we are reappropriating in '25, we have every intention and expectation that we'll, we'll complete at least some aspect of those projects.
That, that's helpful to hear, because I don't like already going over budget in my first Budget Amendment, right? Like, we're just, we're already in the hole. And if there are some things that realistically make sense for us to say, either we're not going to be able to do, or maybe it's not a, a big of a priority for us to, to go over, push the '25 budget over budget by $20,000, that's something that would be helpful for us to kind of have those conversations and for city management to have those conversations with staff as you all are going through and really starting to flush out a number of these activities. Again, many of them are contract-related, and that, that makes sense. But I do think that we are eventually going to hit a reckoning, particularly with aspects of the ARPA funding, which had already been discussed, where we just have to make a decision on whether or not something's going to happen. And if it's not going to happen, then figuring out what is the right way for us to reallocate those dollars, so instead of continuing to add to the expenditures, we're able to say, look, we're, it's not happening. We can figure some things out and then figure out where we need to replenish our reserves.
And, and just speaking to the $20,000, Director Chung, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that $19,000, $20,000 is all a result of matches. Is that right?
Yes, these are the matching fund, according to Ira, the Housing Director. His note is the increased budget is due to the city matching requirement for New Avenue Section A project, New Avenue Section B project, and Maple Avenue grants. So these are the three major projects that we need to provide matching funds in order to use the grant fund.
Nonetheless, Mayor, your, your point is well taken.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and I think that kind of goes back to the first point about all this matching, and it's great that we have a lot of money, and it's great that we're getting a lot of grants. But I think we may have to start thinking more about, for future budgets, where the matches need to be, right? So if this, if, like, it, it probably shouldn't show as an increase in expenditures for '25 if we knew we were going to have to have matches for this in '25. In theory, could have been, that match could have been covered in, in the '25 budget, if I'm making sense at all. Now, it makes sense if, if what we're talking about is, hey, there's a delay in this project or the series of projects, and therefore, the match that we had allocated for '24, we couldn't expend. But I, I think that what we may find ourselves continuing to come up against, which is a good thing, is as we're getting these grant funds, making sure we're able to pre-anticipate the amount of matches that we're going to need in, in upcoming fiscal years, so that it doesn't come across as if we're adding expenditures and we don't have a corresponding revenue, if, if that makes sense at all. Because otherwise, we're going to keep running into this where we need to have matches in a budget, an upcoming budget that we didn't account for.
Makes sense. Actually, in fiscal year '24, the matching fund for the Special Revenue Fund is taken out from the ARPA fund. So this has been changed, just for fiscal year '25.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
No, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's really helpful. And we can do that, right? We, we can, we can do matches through ARPA, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. That makes you feel better.
Yeah. And I did just want to follow up on your point. You know, every, every finance team I worked with, and Susan's no exception, when folks bring forward, you know, the first Budget Amendment to bring FY '24 funds into the next fiscal year, Susan will always ask the question, hey, why didn't you get this project done this year? And why shouldn't this be going into reserve, right? And, and having those conversations, well, what's the plan for spending this year? You didn't do it last year, what's the plan for spending it this year? So we are very intentional about what makes it onto the final sheet that you look at. And to David's point earlier, that doesn't mean that there aren't still a couple of, of bundles of funds that are there, for example, the, you know, the recreation facility funds that we're carrying over next year that we don't have a great plan for right now. But we intend to carry those funds over so that we can have that conversation.
No, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Small?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to give staff who are involved in some of these numbers an opportunity to. opportunity to talk a little bit about it, if that was the issue. Like, for example, like, a lot of this, Ira and the HCD staff provided an additional memo to this budget amendment discussion. And so I would just like for that department to have an opportunity, since a lot of these are carryover grants from HCD projects, we just have a discussion about, like, what we think optimistically is timelines and whatever else, so that people could feel better about these things. I think that would be helpful.
Director Kaller, do you want to share anything about your grants? And it might even be helpful if you could elaborate some on how you prep your budget for upcoming grants and try to anticipate matches?
Yeah, certainly. So first of all, thank you very much, Mayor and Council, Ira Kaller, Director, HCD. Sorry, I am not there in person this evening. I guess, so very briefly, you know, we are very lucky to have Patty as our grants coordinator. We expect to have a lot more grants in future years as well. So this is certainly a prescient conversation. You know, I'll just briefly point out that one of the real challenges we have in terms of kind of grants and aligning them with fiscal year budgets is that firstly, most of our grants, a vast majority of our grants, are not single-year grants. They are multi-year spend grants, normally about a two-year timeline, excuse me, for most of our grants. And they also are not awarded kind of with a July 1 start date. So what we have traditionally done is kind of make a best guess estimate, kind of at the, when we are putting together a fiscal year budget, as to, you know, how much of that grant we're going to spend in a given year. And then we'll kind of sit down at this time of year and see how close we were, and see how much we need to kind of make an adjustment as we get going. We traditionally err on the side of caution, so that that kind of city-match, general funds commitment doesn't change too much. And, you know, I'll just briefly say, all of these special revenue funds that you see here are on track and on progress. You know, we certainly run into some of the issues that Director Braithwaite referenced around contractors as well. But all of these projects are on track, and I believe all except for one will actually be complete at the end of fiscal year '25. So you will not see any carryforward from these grants in '26. And the last thing I'll very briefly mention is, we did kind of try and do a bit more pre-planning in the FY '25 budget for future grants. If you recall, in the CIP budget, we did approve a $10,000 allocation for what we called roadway and byway matches, which was kind of a, you know, hold amount, so that if we do get grants for roadway projects in the coming year, you know, we have some of that match built into the budget already.
Thank you, Ira. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. And in holding true with our timelines, we have exhausted the time allocated for this discussion, and we have no more lights. So thank you all very much. Again, the first budget amendment is usually the most complex, and all of the work that you all have done has made it quite easy. So thank you so much. So I'm going to do a quick check with my colleagues for a break. Okay? So we will reconvene at nine.
All right. Thank you all so much for allowing us to take a little bit of break. Right now, we are encroaching on our last work session for the evening. And that is the FY25 Budget Policy Working Group Findings Discussion. I do want to thank Councilmember Foulter, Councilmember Gibson, and Councilmember Siemens for the work that you all did on this work group. And the hope is that we will be able to move forward in terms of discussing the recommendations that were discussed within the working group, but also as we continue to work on resolutions for the budget, that we can leverage the information that we'll discuss today to finalize our resolution. So just as a reminder for folks, bear with me as I set my timer. We are slated for a 20-minute presentation followed by a 15-minute discussion. So...
I'm going to try to go faster than that. We'll see.
All right.
Okay, so I want to thank my fellow councilmembers that helped work on the budget group with me. So far to date, we have, we now have an expanded budget calendar that lets us get into the conversation earlier rather than waiting till March or April. Last night was the first candidate orientation to let candidates know what they're getting into when they get into council as far as what our budget is like. We had a resolution, and this is just in case anybody wants to go back, that talked about our budget priorities. That was December 11th of 2023. And also this year in the fiscal year 2025 budget, there was a performance measure or line item in order for us to get a consultant in to help us with some of those. Just so that you understand, if you look at the resolution that we passed, and I'm sorry, I don't have the actual resolution in front of me. If you look at the, that tasked the working group, the first part of that, the first part of that was given to Councilmember Siemens. The second part of that was given to myself, and then the third part of that was given to Councilmember Gibson. For the vehicle replacement policy and equipment replacement reserve, this is a reserve that is put aside in order to replace city vehicles and equipment. It's not, not limited to vehicles. And according to Director Braithwaite of Public Works, under the current vehicle replacement policy, vehicles start being assessed at five years of age, and mileage and maintenance costs are also considered. And the evaluation parameters are congruent to industry standards. Out of the working group recommendations, and I just want to pause here. And these are working group recommendations, and so that they were agreed upon with three people. And so they are not necessarily the recommendations that the council will decide or the recommendations that we want to put forward as a council. And so we're reviewing this really quickly to give you an idea of what sort of conclusions the working group came to so that we can have a discussion and decide what are the priorities for us to put forward to give the city manager's office direction. So for the city...
But these are three?
These are three councilmembers, yeah. City manager to continue to regularly review the vehicle replacement policy and ensure appropriate adjustments to its objective criteria. In the future, lifespan of vehicles may change with electrification. Consider evaluating cost of vehicle maintenance earlier than the five-year mark. And then, in order for us to move forward electrification, it's likely that we're not putting enough money into those, into that ERR as we've seen when we went to buy a street sweeper and it was double the cost, as we saw with the garbage trucks being double the cost. And as we all know, if any of you have looked into buying your own personal EV, it's going to be the same thing for regular cars. For, so the road maintenance policy. For some background, currently, the city resurfaces streets over a 20-year cycles, locating $500,000 a year to this expenditure. And that was established in 2004, and we have not increased that amount since then. So when the policy was first established, we also had the layer underneath of the paving work was in disrepair. And so it was a lot of work. And so we try to not get to a point where, where we have issues beyond that first layer. Making adjustments will can require monitoring by Public Works to the where of the underlayment of the streets to determine if we're able to stretch out this time period longer than 20 years. Recommendations we came away with are to direct the city manager to continue to review the practice of possible adjustments to frequency of paving to determine if we can prolong the lifespan. And so that also has sort of an environmentalist angle that if we're able to not throw away that, we're able to not do this work as often as we're doing it right now, it also has environmental impact. But since this $500,000 has not had any adjustments since 2004, its efficiency should be reviewed by the city manager. So this is somewhere where it's, it seems more likely that upon review, it's going to cost us more money, not less money, even if we're able to adjust and pave those roads a little less frequently. For stormwater fees, the city council revised the fee structure in the fiscal year 2022, and all properties are billed on a base rate of $25 per 500 square feet of impervious surface. The projected fiscal year 25 revenues are $775,000. Recommendations: At the conclusion of the working group's assignment, neither city staff nor council had a chance to review LIDC's report. So since that, since us getting together now, LIDC has come back to us with their report. So direct the city manager to provide an update on recommended projects from the LIDC along with recommended implementation plan and potential adjustment to the current stormwater fee so that we can support escalation of the city's overall stormwater mitigation plan. And direct city manager to find ways to support private property stormwater abatement in ways that are equitable in taxing obligation. So far, not so good on that, right? Like, the, the programs that we're seeing are similar to Montgomery County's, and I'm blanking on the name of it right now. Reinscape's program, which takes taxes from everybody, and we just see people that can afford to do the work, do the work. And so we are definitely not recommending to do something like that. We're hoping that maybe one day we will find another plan. For the city fees and, city fees, services, and rentals. Background: Most senior-level staff report that they assess their department fees, services, rentals when they're preparing for the budget. The city is restricted in making profits on many of the services it provides to citizens. Increasing fees will mean that services offered by the city that support low-income residents will be burdensome on those residents. Public Works reports that they experienced increased efficiency through software upgrades, which has meant less time on task. Recommendations: The city manager should continue to evaluate fees to ensure that they fully cover staff time. If there are behaviors that the council wishes to influence through fees, they will need to clarify that with the city manager. So for instance, if we're trying to discourage people from parking streets, parking cars on streets, you could increase parking permit fees. Or, you know, I can't think of other things right now, but some other things along those lines. Railroad and utility tax increases. The working group reviewed rates of similar jurisdictions. The city's rate of 1.57 per $100 of assessed valuation is comparable. Historically, increases in this tax are directly passed on to the utility tax, utility rate payers. Recommendation is for the city manager to investigate further on how an increase may affect residents. For commercial property, non-inventory and inventory tax. Some background: In April of 2018, the city council opted to repeal the city's inventory tax. That tax was removed in order to be in line with other jurisdictions surrounding the city. When the inventory tax was repealed, it was with the intent to determine alternate revenue sources. Non-inventory tax can be complicated and to predict on the city's end and creates more work on commercial end and affects certain types of businesses more than others. Since the pandemic, businesses have had an added unpredicted financial strain. Most businesses perceive themselves currently in a recovery phase. Depending on the business association, some areas still have high area, high levels of vacancy. Recommendations: The goal of the committee with regard to a higher commercial property or non-inventory tax is to generate revenue for the city from the commercial district. Understanding that currently businesses may not be stable enough to endure an additional tax, we would like to understand what indicators the city manager will look for to signal that our commercial properties are flourishing and can withstand shouldering a tax increase. As economic conditions continue to change, the working groups suggest council receive yearly updates on vacancy rates and comparisons of taxes with other businesses and other business associations similar to Tacoma Park. For vacant property tax, the registration for a vacant property is currently $200 annually. There are approximately 14 vacant properties within Tacoma Park. Findings: Vacant property tax is not going to be a significant revenue, source of revenue for the city. Staff assess owners of the vacant properties are often financially restricted to rehabilitate their properties. What next? The city manager will need more guidance from council on what outcome is sought. This would be a policy decision about what we want to do about vacant properties, not a financial decision about generating revenue. So to the more interesting part. Much of what council sought to address in the budget finance resolution, we found that the city staff is already mindful of, such as city fees, services, rentals, and reductions to programs and possible new sources of funding. Possible city council direction for city manager. And so I'm not necessarily recommending that we're going to do all of these things because we already ask a lot of staff and, to get all of this done and to keep us on track for this budget calendar that we've already laid out is going to be difficult. We could ask that the city manager's office explore increased railroad and utility tax scenarios, make suggestions for increases of the ERR to fund new purchases of EVs, make suggestions for increase to road maintenance policy to account for inflation, make suggestions for possible new sources of revenue, make suggestions for possible reductions, or something else that others want to discuss. Thanks. And I'm going to turn things back over to our DJ mayor.
Awesome. Wiki Wiki. All right. Thank you so much for this great presentation. We have about 22 minutes for discussion, and I see Councilmember Small's slide.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. There's a, there are a couple of things here. I think I more have a point of order at this point than question because of the way the presentation is constructed. Do you have any suggestion on how you want to go across these? So it's not meandering or...
Yeah, I think the, I think this last slide that we see here is really where it'd be helpful for us to focus.
That was what I was hoping for. So I, I appreciate the, the work that's done here, that, like, work product from the council or members of council. It's always cool to do that, like, makes you feel like you're actually, like, doing it. And so I had a couple of questions about the way that this sets up. Because increasing tax scenarios that you perceive to be onerous to the taxpayer eventually as opposed to the utility by increased rates or whatever, and increasing the ERR fund to make purchase of the EVs and increases to the road maintenance policy are all entirely reasonable things to me. But it also seems to be in contravention to some degree of what some of the assertions about what our goals were as a council. And so I'm curious about how we separate some of these things, like, to make sure that we can pick them off, I would, I guess is a good way of putting it. Like, the railroad and utility tax part, it would seem pretty easily to figure out from pressure or whatever else if we could up those and, and generate revenue. That doesn't seem hard. But talking about changes to the funds, in particular for the EVs, seems like an uncertain prospect right now. And, and change to the road maintenance policy, I think I would probably defer to Darrell on because we do have that truck that generates information about the density and all those other things. So I'm not sure that we would find, I don't know, maybe the, I don't think, I, I, more power to you, you can find more efficient ways to do that, I guess is what I would say. But what I did want to say about this is I really do appreciate the conscientious nature of the way in which this committee looked at this and the reality of dealing with the fact that if we're going to retool or be resilient or any of those kinds of things, we're going to have to look at spending some money in some areas that we currently are, have formulas for. And that may mean for more democracy. Maybe it means we make a different formula. But I do appreciate what you guys did here, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, and Councilmember Small, I guess this might be useful for, for everyone. You know, the, the, the working group was tasked with looking at aspects of revenue generation, right? And as of right now, the only way we can generate revenues is tax, right? And no matter how many ways you really want to look at these items, they require taxing, right? Either increasing taxes in terms of the railroad and utility tax or increasing property tax to allow for more monies to go towards, unless we find some grant from somewhere to fund future purchases of EVs. Or if we're increasing or changing our road maintenance policy to account for inflation, that means you need more money, right? And that money, right now, the source that we have is what? Tax, right? So I do, however, think, and I appreciate what the, the working group has done, is to try to help us with thinking through ways to diversify our, our tax structure in a way that maybe doesn't hit as hard in the same way for folks. But I also see that some of these really are designed to force us to plan better, right? So it's a lot easier for us to go ahead and say, now, we need to start putting more money towards the ERR in order to make sure that when these EVs come around and everybody's going to want it, we already have the money in the bank, right? So if this council agrees that, yes, we should modify our ERR policy because we care about making sure... making sure that we have an electric fleet, then that means that we need to be prepared to say, hey, we need to make sure through the budgeting process that we allocate more money. That means cutting certain programming or increasing taxes to fund it.
Yeah, and I think, I just, I think, first of all, thank you for the, the overview explanation because I do think that that centers a little bit what I was trying to say. And that is that, like, some of these things, I, I do feel like are in the retooling bucket as opposed to the increasing tax burden bucket. And maybe now that we are thinking in those kinds of terms and we have a senior staff that has been in a couple or three or four different places, maybe we, maybe the long-term goal of that staff is to reconstruct the manner in which we do some of these things. But I did, I did want to say that, that I appreciate the gravity with which this presentation is being made because like realistically, like unless we get an 80-foot ideally building, not a 160-foot building, and we get like 15 of them, and then freak out everybody else about how there's too many people here or whatever else, we're not going to get a bunch of tax revenue out of nowhere. And since we can't do any sports tourism yet because we don't have a new rec center, that, like, we can't do that either. So I, I just wanted to say in the context of that and not take up any more of this time, that I appreciate the fact that, like, this is not an easy thing to do, and particularly not necessarily an easy thing for Randy to do because he's trying to make the taxes go down. And so like, this is all about taxes having to go up. So, well, to some degree.
Some degree.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's a, that's a tough burden to, or, you know, tough pill to swallow or whatever else because we're trying to do government, we're trying to make sure the government doesn't fall apart, you know, we're not, like, lights on, train's running.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, yes, I'd like the taxes to go down. And most of my constituents do too. And we can, I mean, both Taliya and Jason, you're, you're accurate in terms of this is not any bonanza for, for, for revenue. And it is retooling and as, as the mayor said, it's, the, the working group basically concluded, you know, with a limited amount of time and a little amount of information, is that we need to study more, we need to look at our policies. And so the, for that, you know, I'm proud of that. We looked at some other things that, but we, I think the, the recognition that we don't have all the answers right now, this did not present, present all the answers is, is pretty clear. And, but, so how we can dig in or how we can encourage staff to dig in further and do some research maybe is, is the question, and it wouldn't necessarily be limited to these, to these five.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Dibala?
Yeah. Thank, thank you very much for this, and the presentation really helped to explain the memo, and I, I thank you for, for laying it out that way. Two, three, three things. First, I had drafted a, a possible memo in May, budget direction needs to be reworked. I'm happy to work with whichever person from the committee, from the working group it winds up being to, to put something together, assuming we still need a resolution. We still want one?
I, I think the, the goal of tonight is to talk through a number of these recommendations because they have direct implications for what was included in the resolution. So for example, there was language in the resolution that was asking for capital improvement relative to municipal best practices, specifically updating the equipment replacement reserve policy to establish a goal of minimum number of years the city reserves should aim to fund and a strategy for reaching the funding goal. And I guess the, the bigger question is, you know, what does that mean?
I think, I think I like number two on this list better.
That's where we're going, Councilmember Dibala.
Yeah, so, so I was just, so I, so, so my first, so my first thing was throw this out, I'm willing to work with whoever to redo it. That, that, just want to get that out of the way. But to, to some of the specific recommendations that didn't make this list, the, the commercial property taxes, I think should be looked at sooner rather than later. I don't, personally, I would be stronger than you all were in your recommendation on that. So that's my first thing. On stormwater fees, on your recommendation, I liked the first bullet, having myself personally done a great deal of work over the years on looking for ways to support private property stormwater abatement, I'm prepared to drop that one because I don't think that it's out there. We could talk more about it, but that's my reaction. But I would like to have staff look at the LIDC recommendations, which are going to have cost implications, and see what that, we don't have to do it, but I want to see what it looks like for, 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 for possible future fee increases. So that's my second point.
Councilmember Dibala, picking up where, where you just left off. So before, the, the concern was about, in terms of the stormwater fee, making sure that there's staff capacity or resources to assist the city in its expansion of flood management efforts. What we're talking about now in terms of LIDC implementation is far more specific than that.
So it defines flood management efforts as the LIDC work, which I think is what was meant in the first place, so I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So to, in here somewhere, there's a comprehensive look at fees. I can see that, that staff doesn't think that that's something we need to do at this point. I'm okay to let that one go. To the point about vacant properties, and then I'm, then I have one more point after that. To the point about vacant properties, there's property taxes for vacant properties, and there's fees for vacant properties. And, and then the third piece, which doesn't seem to be here at all, is how does this apply to vacant commercial properties? We had a comment earlier tonight. Do we even have the authority to deal with that? We don't have the authority to deal with property tax increases for vacant properties because the vacant property is defined by the state as an unimproved, what we would call an unimproved plot of land. And that's not what we, we're looking at, I don't think. So I, that one probably needs a little more clarity, I guess is what I'm saying. As to what, what we're, which piece if we're really trying to get after. And to the list of five, if I had to, I am going to assume, since I've heard the city manager say this a few times, that suggestions for new revenue should be one of those things that they, that gets looked at. I am going to assume that possible reductions is going to get addressed during the budget process, so I don't feel like we need to direct anybody to do that. I do think, and one, and the same thing with three, probably in the budget process is already going to happen. So I would go to one and two, and four, and then pick up some of these specifics that, from the presentation that weren't, that didn't make this list. So I don't know if that's too much all at once, but that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Hanzak?
Thank you. Thank you very much to the working group that put this together. I think it's extremely clear. And thank you, Councilmember Dibala, I found your comments particularly helpful. I don't know what's the best way for me to walk through some of my feedback, but I tend to concur with a lot of what Councilmember Dibala was said. If I could ask clarification, Councilmember Dibala, when you were talking about the commercial property tax, and you said you didn't really necessarily agree with the conclusion of the subcommittee, can you, can you please clarify? Just want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly.
Let me get it open. So looking at indicators of local commercial property health, that makes some sense, and I think that the two business associations would probably be readily able to suggest what those ought to be. Yearly updates on the vacancy rates and comparisons of taxes with other businesses, et cetera. Instead, I would prefer that we look at what a commercial property tax rate might, let me rephrase that. I would prefer that we work with the two business associations to lay out how we would approach talking about, how we would, how we would approach a possible commercial tax rate. I would go straight to, let's start talking about a commercial property tax, figure out who we need to talk to, how we need to do it. I'd like to move on that sooner rather than later, and I would not want to receive a couple of years of updates before we get to that point. So, does that help?
Yes. I would say there are three business leagues though, by the way, I don't know.
Three, yeah. Did I say two?
You said two.
I meant three.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Just, just wanted to.
I forgot OTBA. I can't, I just slipped my mind.
That, that must have been what it was. Anyway, thanks. Okay, so I, and I, I took particularly interest in the slide on vacant property tax. I would like to hear a little bit more from our city staff about, about this question of what else we might be able to do to prompt some development. I think particularly in Ward Five, we have a, a commercial property that is not being developed and we don't, it feels to me like we just have very little control, and I would love to know what else we can do to stimulate that kind of movement. It is a real situation.
Are you in vacant property taxes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I thought I said that. And, and I haven't yet heard of any specific ideas. This is a perfect example though of a property that's been like this for quite some time. And if we were to take away capital, let's say from the builder, it may have actually a negative consequence in terms of us trying to get something to happen. Then again, I'd like to know what other levers we've got because we don't have anything else. So that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily get us anywhere near revenue. But I guess, and then, and then the other thing that I took particular interest in on your, on your slides, I would say I generally concur with most of the conclusions that the subcommittee has come up with. On number four, I don't know if you didn't have space to include some of the suggestions for possible new sources of revenue, but I'd love to hear some of the ideas that were tossed around by your committee, and I'll just throw some out that come to mind when I think about them. We know that, and I, you know, I don't know how I feel about this, but we know that we would get 50% sales tax if there were some places selling marijuana products, and I don't think we've got any of those sites yet in the city. That was one of the big perks, as I understood.
Not registered ones.
What's that? Not registered ones, right. I've also, myself, I've considered some, you know, wilder ideas, which obviously we're not going to tackle right now, but I mean, I would just love to hear some of the things, you know, that we could be a democracy hub, a sustainability hub, a sports destination, a special tax district might be interesting as well. As I imagine the purple line stations coming in and out of the city, I'd really like the city to have a very solid vision of how we operate in about five to seven years from now and what we're trying to move towards within the next 15 years, you know? Do we want to be a place where people who are intend, you know, people who are living here are going to change their patterns of behavior, hopefully? Are they going to sort of continue with the status quo? Are we looking at them living here and spending their money here on basic goods and services? You know, how are we imagining that 15-year timeline in terms of our economics? And what does that mean for what we ought to be specifically imagining as our future revenue sources within the next 10 to 15 years? I think it matters a lot, and it will have a tremendous impact on the equity consequences of the purple line and sort of how we distribute that wealth and, and how we make it, how we make it go. I don't, I haven't heard any dialogue really about that as a city, so I think it's important that we do that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And as a member of the work group, I would like to, again, thank the, the staff, and specifically like to thank Director Braithwaite for her support of the work that we did with this, with this working group, and also for acting, or not acting, you're not acting anymore. You were at the time. But Deputy City Manager Bullock, for the time and effort that he put into the work that we were doing. He was always, you know, filling our requests for information and very helpful. Yeah, one of the things that, again, it was mentioned earlier, but I, I want to again reiterate the, how impressed I was at least with the, the mindfulness of the city staff on each of these topics, that it, there weren't any really glowing opportunities for making changes that were going to increase revenues. It seemed like all these things were well thought out and, and in place, and, and we were really left with trying to look for minor things that could, changes that could be made to maybe increase revenues. And two specific topics that I did want to mention, and the vacant property tax, is one that I worry about, that because it isn't always just commercial properties that some people are thinking of, but they're also thinking of residential properties and how we can, if you will, encourage more development of vacant residential properties. And for those of you who wonder what that means, it might mean the side lot that you have adjacent to your house that you use for your picnics and, and partying, or your kids playing, that, that some people in the community would like to see just have another home there. And I'm not real supportive of that concept, so I would not like to see that in the resolution that we, that we put forward. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that I came away from this thinking that where we ought to be putting in a lot of the, of our time and effort going forward has really nothing to do with the work of this, of this working group. And I think the greater benefit for everyone in the city would be a stronger concentration on economic development, that rather than worrying about how we can squeeze more blood from the turnip, see if we can't get some more turnips.
And so we're out, out of time on this discussion, but I do want to give my, give myself, take license to give myself an opportunity to speak. There's one, I want to thank you all for putting this presentation together. I think it's extremely, extremely helpful. I do have one question around the road maintenance policy, and I know that one of the questions that came up was around maintenance policy to account for inflation, and also, I don't know if we're also talking about the frequency of when resurfacing is done, so looking at that policy more comprehensively. I'm assuming that that's what we're talking about, but I just want to.
It's both.
But, okay. And then the other piece, I kind of want to also talk about vacant property and, you know, I think that the working group is, is right in that when you're talking about vacant properties, not necessarily vacant lots, but vacant properties, it, it is more to it than just revenue. It is how can we make sure that we're not incentivizing blight in our community, where you have homes that are not being properly maintained, people are not living in them, grass is overgrown, windows are busted out, squirrels are making it a hotel. So I think that if, if we as a council feel like that is something that is important, that we want to make sure that we're able to address, then that is a point of looking at vacant property tax strictly for the purpose of trying to make sure that we're addressing the needs of, and ensuring that we're maintaining the health of the properties in our community. I know that Councilmember Hanzak and Councilmember Siemens has brought up what, what I want to highlight, which is development. to highlight, which is development is the way to increase our tax base so that we're able to, um, make sure that we're able to pay for the things that we need. It is, for me, I do not agree with increasing the commercial tax rate. I think that it is extremely important that we are not disincentivizing development in segments of our community that needs it. I think, you know, Ward Six, for example, the Tacoma Langley Crossroads, we've said time after time after time, that is our largest revenue generating commercial district. People may not realize when we're talking about passing down the cost of an increased tax rate, is that the people who patron the businesses in the crossroads area are typically low to moderate income Hispanic individuals who, who don't live in the city, right? They live across the street in Prince George's County.
And need those services.
Right? They live across the street in Prince George's County. So I, I think that it is really important for us when we are talking about what it is that we're, we're trying to do when we're talking about commercial tax rate. It, it goes to this bigger issue of what does development look like in the city? What are we trying to incentivize? What is it that we're striving to achieve and who are we striving to serve? And so I do think that, um, it is critically important that when we're having conversations about commercial properties, that we take in, um, into consideration how we want to deal with development in the city. And, and so I think that that's a really, really, really important thing that we need to address as a council in terms of the vision of what we want our city in terms of its development to look like and how are we putting forth the efforts and the monies and the resources to, to push those things forward. So with that, we are over time. Just wanna make sure, Councilmember Gibson, did you have any quick two-minute, two minutes? You got two minutes.
Less than two minutes. I, I just wanna say, suggest that with any, uh, resolution that I think Cindy said she would work on, I, I, I do think that there is room and there is need to put something that has to do with the expenditure, expenditure side of our fiscal situation. It was a part of our original mandate to look at best, best practices on both the revenue as well as the expenditure side. And so that I am more than willing to, uh, to work with Cindy and others to come up with some language. I had a placeholder, which I'll just read as kind of a, the direction here, that the city council, I mean, I guess I need to make a point that I've, um, recognized that a lot of the work here is being done in the staff, by staff, to look at expenses and, and I want to celebrate that and I wanna support that. So I think the city council strongly supports the staff's continuing efforts to review expenditures to contain or reduce costs through organizational review, data analysis and research. Something along the line, is some, is that what, what I would like to, to propose and maybe with a little bit more teeth in it, um, in terms of beyond that. But I, I strongly think that we have to have a balanced approach to our budget fiscal situation.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Gibson. You did, you stayed in the two minutes. All right. Well, I think that is all we have this evening. Thank you all so much. In terms of next steps, we are on the agenda for this resolution. I've been taking quite copious notes in terms of what I've heard from folks. So the hope is that we'll be able to get a draft forward for council review. We'll try to make sure that we get something forward. I'm sorry, I'm looking for my rolling agenda to see when this is on there.
So, so you're thinking of a formal resolution is still useful?
Yep, the formal resolution will still be useful and I believe. I just need to quadruple check because I thought we had put this on the agenda.
Yeah, I thought I saw it, but I don't remember when.
Okay, so I will.
Two weeks from now.
Thank you. It skips a week. That, I was very purposeful in trying to make sure that we did that. Okay.
Thank you. So who's the we?
So the. All right, so, um, I've been taking notes. I can share the notes from, um, tonight and it's, I've shared the notes from tonight and we'll, um, forward the draft, um, resolution to Councilmember Fuchal, who's been working on this, um, presentation. All right, that is it for this evening. All right, any other comments or points? All right, excellent. Thank you all so much.